the Chatham Select Board. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. Seeing none? Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28, 2025, signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30, 2027, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First item of business is to establish a quorum. Mr. Matters?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
And the chair is present, so we have a quorum. I would note that Board members Dykens and Davis are unable to attend tonight. Board member Davis is hosting an event with Governor Healey, at which Mr. Dykens is also in attendance. So, the first item of actual business is to approve two sets of minutes. The first is the set of minutes of June 24, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second, and then I have a comment.
Yes, I do have some, too. So, I'll ask for corrections or comments. Stuart?
Sure, and, you know, I saw it on the electronic version, and now I'm trying to hunt it down, but I was wondering whether maybe we could hold off on approving the minutes tonight, and because I'm not sure that the comments that were made about why the this issue has not been pursued over the last three to five years, as far as the water meters and water rates, was adequately addressed in the minutes. You know, I had the, I guess I was bored one night, and I rode the, read the Attorney General's latest Open Meeting Law Guide and educational materials. And, you know, one of the, one of the things about, and I know we'll be talking about this at a future meeting, one of the things they mentioned in there is that the minutes should, should paint a picture and be descriptive enough that somebody who was not at the meeting would really have a complete understanding of, of what took place. And by not capturing those comments that were made about why these, the meters for the irrigation weren't, weren't pursued, I don't think were captured completely. And I'd like to be able to...
Did you want to have an opportunity to prepare some language for...
Well, I, yeah, I could...
We can certainly defer approval of this set of minutes, and possibly both if you have issues with the second one.
Sure. I mean, I could prepare something. It, and this is part of the issue is, which would mean I'd have to review that meeting, or at least that portion of the meeting. And I lived through it once, and, not that they're not that exciting, but I was hoping that, you know, maybe I, well, maybe I could work with Kathy on that.
Why don't I suggest that? Maybe you could do...
Yeah.
Ms. Corey, do you have any objection to deferring approval of this?
No, I'm fine. I'm fine.
Why don't we do that? And on that particular issue, you can get together with Kathy.
Great.
I do have some, in the meantime, I do have some corrections of my own, and you can incorporate them, Kathy. So, and maybe, I don't know if you have any, Corey. Okay. So, on the first, first one is on page two. First paragraph, in the third line, after the word "reappointed," I would like to insert "or a successor is appointed," because I believe that's what I said. And then in the next line, I would strike the word "following." And after the word "meeting" in that line, I would insert "immediately following." And at the end of that sentence, I would put a comma, and I would add particularly "for" the ZBA, CHC, that's the Historical Commission, AHT, the Trust, and the Airport Commission, period. Let me know when I can proceed. Okay. Next paragraph, I would introduce it with, with the phrase of the clause, "Chair Nacastro reminded that anyone wishing to renew." And then on, and then I would add a third, as a third paragraph, "Chair Nacastro indicated that public comment would be accepted on items 6C (lighthouse beach) and, and, I'm sorry, it's 4C (lighthouse beach) and 4G (Ellis/127 Old Harbor Road)." Under the public hearing, this appears several times. I, it indicates, the way it's read, it reads is that the clerk opened, reads the public hearing notice, but it's really the chair that opens the hearing. So, if you could adjust that on, every time that occurs. On the next page, the, similarly, under the proposed increase to the town water rates, I would like a sentence that reads that the chair indicated that the board was meeting as water and sewer commissioners. On page four, right in the middle of paragraph, which begins, "Chair Nacastro invited Bruce Burgardis." In the fourth line, at the end, where it says "unregistered irrigation systems," I would put "unregistered/unmetered irrigation systems." Page five, up at the top, in the second line, where it refers to a potential 5% increase, it's, I think that should read 3% increase, is what they were talking about. Or did they say, I know you watched the tape, so...
At that point, they had discussed five, it was a potential 5%.
All right, we'll leave it as is. Leave it as is. I know it says 3% later on.
Because, yeah, they refined the comment later on.
In the middle paragraph in the fourth line, at the end, which reads "which would be 50 to 66%," I would change "would" to "might." In that same paragraph, third line from the bottom, "is no way to determine," I would have, insert the word "precisely" after the word "determine." And, page nine, under section Roman numeral three, "Chair Nacastro stated," I would substitute reiterated or stated. Page 10, just after the vote that's recorded in the middle, I would insert a sentence, "Chair Nacastro suggested a clarifying edit to the form of these agreements." Chair Nacastro suggested a clarifying edit to the form of these agreements. And then finally, on page 18, at the bottom, the motion by Mr. Dykens, I would suggest that it should read "reappoint Patricia Gibson," not "appoint." Those are my edits. So, you'll incorporate those, and Stuart will get together with you, and then this set of minutes will come back to us at a future meeting.
Thank you.
The next is the July 8, 2025, set of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any corrections, or is, did you want to defer this one, Stuart, also?
No, this one, I think, was fine. It was really the water rate issue. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any corrections?
No.
I do have a number here also. On page one, those participating, I'm not sure if we had the correct last name on Ms. Smith. I thought it was Schmidt, but I could be wrong.
Schmidt.
Is it Schmidt?
Schmidt.
We can get that. Page two, under the public announcements, first sentence, after Mr. DeBoer's name, I would put "and fellow members." And in the third line, after the word "members," I would put "and other volunteers." I guess department, police and fire departments should be pluralized. Page nine, two-thirds of the way down, there was discussion on tiered penalties. I would put, insert the word "possible" before "tiered." The final paragraph, second line, "a public hearing would be required." I would substitute the word "conducted." On page 11, again, two, three-quarters of the way down, the paragraph that begins, "Richard Creath, Chatham, second to last line, town is in the process of," I think the word "doing" is missing, "doing that." Page 12, the italicized, bolded language in the third line, the words, the phrase "come back," I would strike the word "come," and I would insert "for that to be brought," and "for that to be brought back to the Select Board." Page 14, this occurs several times, the reference to Louis Hibe and Alfred Tria, I would like to insert their title as doctor. And finally, on, on page 18, up at the top, second line, after the word "appointment," I would insert the clause, "that was left unfilled." Board of Trustees' appointment, "that was left unfilled," period. So, with those corrections, you have them all? Thank you. With those corrections, I will take a vote. Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Next, we have public announcements and agenda item requests. I do have a couple, but I'll ask other members of the board first. Mr. Smith?
Sure. Thank you. I was hoping that we could put on a future agenda and discuss the residential tax exemption issue again. I know this has been brought before the board in previous years, and I'd like to, I'd like to bring that up again, if we could.
Okay. As you know, we have to deal with that when we set the tax rate in September. So, you're talking about an earlier discussion of that?
Yeah, I was, I'm hoping so, so it doesn't get too far down the line.
Okay. Thank you. We will insert that. So, I have a couple of agenda items requests. First, I'll note that the Water and Sewer Committee, Water and Sewer Advisory Committee met last week and again yesterday, and this is on the subject of irrigation. They voted to recommend higher rates for, and stiffer fines for unmetered irrigation use of town water. And that recommendation, those recommendations are coming forward to the Select Board, which will meet as Water and Sewer Commissioners on August 5 and hold a public hearing to consider possibly adopting those measures. Secondly, as many people know, because it's been mentioned multiple times by me, that we have been working on the list of agenda item requests with a view to paring them down, because they had accumulated to a total of 62 when I took the chair, and we had an additional eight that came in for a total of 70. And I appreciate the responses we got from citizens, as well as fellow Select Board members, on which items they wished to renew. And I did review them, and I exercised my discretion under our rules and chose not to go forward, and frankly, to remove several citizen requests, which, with respect to which I provided notice with explanation to the sponsors. The new list has a grand total of 28, so we went from 70 to 28. Our goal will be to schedule these for Select Board consideration based on their sensitivity as to time, the board's meetings, the work schedule, the availability of staff, relevant staff, and third-party, third parties as to those issues. And appreciative especially to the town manager, and particularly to Kathy Lewis, who worked with me. I really appreciate your help, Kathy, on, on getting this together. And I hope we can move these along so we don't have another huge list of items that languish, frankly, on the list. So, with that said, I will ask if there are any public announcements or agenda item requests from the public. Mr. Taylor?
Seth Taylor, 30, Taylor Lane. Speaking with you, Mr. Chairman, previously in the week, I am cognizant of the fact that Selectman Dykens has asked for an agenda item concerning additional things that we could be doing to make things, particularly taxes and town in general, more affordable. I have a couple of items that would be in keeping with that. I have two specific petition articles related to Chapter 59 issues with regulatory things that the town can adopt that will assist low-income seniors. And I also have Chapter 59, Section 5, article for consideration of the board that would require a ballot initiative that would be also of assistance in reducing the tax burden to our senior citizens. So, if we could add to Selectman Dykens' request, certain considerations for issues under Chapter 59, I believe that that general heading would capture what I would like to talk about and not bump up against the open meeting law.
Thank you. I will, I will put those on, as I think they're very important. And we also, as you mentioned, we have a Select Board request on them, so that will have to go on.
I have copies of the documents that I have drafted that I would be happy to leave with you folks at the end of the meeting, so you can, you can front-load those, rather than just get handed them that night and look at them de novo.
If, do you have multiple copies, or?
I have enough for all.
I was going to suggest you give them to Kathy and...
I'll give them to Kathy. I have enough for every selectman.
And she'll disseminate them at the end of the meeting.
I will do that.
Thank you, Seth. Appreciate it. Any other public announcements? Carolyn McClellan.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Carolyn McClellan, South Chatham, Chair of the Community Housing Partnership. So, at the July 14 meeting of the Community Housing Partnership, all five members present voted unanimously to request that the Select Board, so we have two agenda requests. One is to revisit the vote regarding the decision to pause 127 Old Harbor Road's progress. As the only town committee that is advisory to the Select Board regarding all types of housing, affordable, attainable, and year-round, the Community Housing Partnership would like an opportunity to address this dramatic change of direction. The desire to move stepping stone property ahead of 127 Old Harbor Road may be reasonable, but does not necessitate stopping all activity on Old Harbor Road. In fact, stepping stone is already significantly ahead of Old Harbor Road in the RFP process. However, we are currently in the middle of a crucial and early step in the process of preparing an RFP for Old Harbor Road. We have engaged consultants, who have already worked with us on the test fits. They have immersed themselves in the project and are now ready to develop design guidelines, guidelines based on hours of listening to the suggestions and concerns of the Select Board and the public. To choose to stop now is to lose the benefit of all the time and energy and money that's been invested so far. A time to pause would be after we have the design guidelines in hand. Then we can decide when the most advantageous moment would be to develop and issue an RFP relative to the stepping stone project. And two, and I believe Shereen's already made this request, but to move forward with the stepping stone RFP, the Affordable Housing Trust completed the task requested by the Select Board and finalized a draft RFP for the Select Board to review on March 6. We realized the delay in action could have been caused from a number of factors, none of which had to do with the Old Harbor Road property. We're all busy with town meeting, membership of the Select Board change, and there's a new Select Board chair. Stepping stone is far ahead of Old Harbor Road, and RFP could be issued as soon after the Select Board review.
Thank you, Carolyn. We will put that on the agenda, because it's a committee request, and I, my, my practice and policy will be to honor committee requests. I would state for the record that with respect to the RFP for stage, for stepping stones road, this board has not seen it. It may be, may have been submitted to, to us at the staff level, but we've not seen it. And Select Board member Davis did request that it go on, so I'm going to be talking about it with the town manager in terms of when that can go on.
Okay. That's it.
Because from the standpoint, I'm, I don't want to get into deliberation at this point during the meeting, but just for, for, for the understanding of the public, from the, from the standpoint of the Select Board, Old Harbor Road is, is the item that we've seen more of than stepping stones. The trust may have been working on stepping stones and, and developed the RFP for us to look at, but we haven't gotten it yet formally. So, we will, we will take...
We'll work on that on our end, too, because it's all, it's all done and ready to go. You guys just have to look at it.
Well, we just received it about two weeks ago, because I wasn't aware that it was...
Well, we just received it about two weeks ago, because I wasn't aware that it was completed. It wasn't transmitted to us.
Yeah.
No, we have it.
Anyway.
Very well. But it's good to go for you guys to act on, so that's what that is, whereas this one is still in the making.
I saw your committee meeting, so I watched it, and I really wanted to clarify that, because I think there was some understanding on the part of some committee members or member that we were sitting on the RFP for stepping stones, but we hadn't received it.
Right. And I don't think it was, you're sitting on it. There's a lot going on, but we did think we had transmitted it to you guys. The trust did, yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. We will put that forward. Any other public announcements or agenda item requests? None in person, any online? Seeing none, I did want to mention.
Mr. Chair, it looks like.
Oh, Nicole Stern, is that you? You're muted.
Yes, it is. It is me.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Nicole Stern. Due to circumstances beyond my control, I was unable to attend your last meeting on July eighth, when you discussed the issue of irrigation systems that are using town water. I hope you will allow me a few minutes now.
Well, Nicole, this is really, unless you have a public announcement or an agenda item request, this really isn't a portion of the meeting where that can be discussed. That's not on our agenda tonight anyway, but on August fifth, we're going to have a public hearing on rates and fines for unmetered irrigation, and you certainly would have an opportunity to express your thoughts on it at that time. Does that work for you?
I would prefer to do it sooner than later.
Well, is it in the, are your comments in the form of an announcement, or are you arguing a particular position? Because if it's the latter.
I would like.
Go ahead. Please go ahead.
Sorry. As I said, I, these are, I was looking forward to that meeting. I've been very involved for years, and I had a lot to say, but I wasn't able to, so it's.
I thought you did have some comment online, as I recall. I thought you did have some comment. I could, my memory may be.
Not on, unfortunately, I was in the hospital on the eighth, so I wasn't able to be there. You know, I'll go along with whatever you think, but I would like to get it said and on the record.
Yeah, I'm limited by the open meeting law, and we don't have the irrigation item on the agenda for tonight. We do have a, we do have a section, we do have an agenda item with the monthly water report with Mr. Fairley, and if, depending on the content of that discussion, maybe you might be able to offer a comment this evening. So, but I can't do it now.
Okay, well, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public announcements or agenda item requests? If not, I do want to acknowledge the passing of Suzanne Martin, who was a longtime administrative assistant at the fire department, who passed away on July ninth, twenty-twenty-five. I know that she is dearly missed by those in the fire service and other employees of the town. So let us keep her and her family in our thoughts. Okay, turning to regular business items, we have a public hearing to consider a petition from N-Star Electric Company doing business with EverSource Energy to install two handholds, two ninety-one slash HA two and two ninety-one slash HB two.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We have another, the parade.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
I have a funny feeling there could be some.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm guessing there might be some people in the audience.
That's why all these folks are here. Stephen DeBoer, Chair of the Independent State Parade Committee, has an announcement.
Hi, good evening. I'm Steve DeBoer, here as the Chair of the Independent State Parade Committee. We had a very active group again this year that I'd like to acknowledge quickly. Susan Wegner completed her first year on the committee, and I give her a lot of credit, because she was also planning a very busy wedding for the following weekend, so she was pretty busy. Wendy Upson and myself just finished our second parade, so we had a good time. Peter Tulp, who was our treasurer, and I think may have just finished his third year, or maybe fourth, and Tom Campbell, who was our secretary, and I think also has four years. So we're a relatively young group as far as experience, but we have a lot of spirit. And we had a lot of help from Corey Matters, our Select Board liaison, and Police Chief Michael Anderson, who gave us a lot of historic information and kind of guided us for the future, and was very instrumental in helping us sort of decide good and bad things to do. So I appreciate all their help. Of course, all the emergency services, they had a very busy day that day, the fire department. The CERT was activated, the community assistance people were activated, and of course, the DPW, who were extremely busy before, during, and after the parade. So we owe them a big debt of gratitude. I have, I think, nine awards to pass out tonight, but there's four that I'd like to, four groups that I'd like to at least acknowledge, because they did a very good job. We just, we don't have enough awards to hand out. So I'd like to acknowledge the Chatham Squire and Squire Mobile, the Northeast Portable Restrooms, the Magna Family, and the Grateful Mud for the job that they did. So I appreciate everything, appreciate them being in the parade with us this year. So I have awards. They're in no particular order, except for the last three. The first one is for the best business entry, and this is being presented to Mahi Gold. So I don't know if there's anybody here from them? No. The second one is for the best civic entry, and this is being presented to First Night Chatham. So is there anybody here? Okay, the next award is for the best family entry, and this is being presented to the Fitzgerald family. Is there anybody here from the Fitzgerald family? Next award is for the funniest award, and this is being presented this year to the witches on water. The next award would be for the most patriotic entry, and this is being given this year to Pogo Dave. Okay. Next award is for the best youth entry, and it's being given this year to Charlotte and Violet Skinner. Okay, so now we get into for second and third. So the third best overall group this year was Mudo Construction. The second place best overall is being presented to the Chatham Municipal Airport. And, you know, it wouldn't be a Chatham Independent State Parade Committee without giving the first place best overall to the Phillips family farm. Just a note, this is, I think, seven years in a row, so. All right, so that's it. So I appreciate everybody's help, and we had a great day that day, and looking forward to next year.
Thank you, Steve. Commendations to. Commendations to you and your committee, and to Chief Anderson, and congratulations to all the trophy winners. It was a wonderful parade.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will start the public hearing to consider a petition from N-Star Electric Company doing business with EverSource Energy to install two handholds, two ninety-one slash HA two and two ninety-one slash HB two, and thirty-five feet plus or minus of one dash three-inch conduit to provide new underground service to a customer located at forty-one Lakeview Avenue. And I'll ask the clerk to read the public hearing notice.
Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. The Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at five PM on Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, in the large meeting room at the town office, Annex two sixty-one George Ryder Road, Chatham, Mass, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform to consider a petition from N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, to install two handholds, two ninety-one HA two and two ninety-one HB two, and thirty-five feet plus or minus one to three-inch conduit. The purpose of this construction is to provide new underground service to the customer located at forty-one Lakeview Avenue. The public is welcome to attend this meeting in person and participate via link in the meeting's posted agenda. All those interested parties are encouraged to participate.
Thank you. So we'll ask Julia Long from EverSource if you want to make a presentation about this. Tell us about it. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. So again, just to briefly summarize, the customer at forty-one Lakeview Avenue is looking for underground service. So in order to do that, we'd need to install one handhole on one side of the road at the base of the pole, then go underneath the road to the handhole on the customer's property, or in the right way, I'm sorry, at the edge of their property, to provide them underground service.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? This is a public hearing, and does anyone have any comment or questions from the public? None in the room? Anyone online? No. So I'll accept the motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. I'll call the roll. Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so it is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too. Thank you. Next item. We have a public hearing to consider a new annual entertainment license for Hey Joe and Jam sixteen Saquonset Road, West Chatham. And I'll ask the clerk to read the public hearing notice for them, please.
Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, at five PM in the large meeting room at the town hall Annex two sixty-one George Ryder Road to consider a request for a new entertainment license for indoor and outdoor live music for Hey Joe and Jam sixteen Saquonset Road, Chatham, Mass. O two six three three. All interested parties are encouraged to participate in person or remotely via the link in the posted agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a representative from the applicant here? Andrea Towe? Anyone online? So I don't, were we expecting someone?
I had emailed and called her today and did not receive a response, so I'm not sure.
Well, I did have a couple of questions about it, because it's not clear what the times are, the beginning and ending times. It just says hours of entertainment, morning slash afternoon. Dates of the event, it just says weekdays. I don't know if they are including every single day. I know they were anxious to do this, but I don't think I can vote on that until I get that clarified. Mr. Matters?
I mean, I'm very sympathetic to trying to get businesses up and running, but I think procedurally, we're kind of in a pinch right now, so I would just make a motion that we continue the public hearing until our next regular business agenda, so we can keep the ball rolling on their behalf.
And we don't have to advertise it, if we just continue.
If we continue it, yeah.
I'll ask if, since we did open this as a public hearing, any comments from the public? Seeing none, so we'll offer that as a motion, Mr. Matters, to continue the public hearing until our next meeting.
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's moved and seconded. Is there a discussion on that? Stuart, did you want to?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And it doesn't directly relate to this individual or business, but it's related to something I've brought up previously, and you can tell me, Mr. Chairman, what the best way to approach it is. But these, this one is a new application, but these relatively routine public hearing notices for N-Star comes before us routinely. And these entertainment licenses, frequently, at least with my short tenure here, I see that they're, some of them have been coming before us for years, or before the board for years. And I was interested in a legal opinion on these more routine or mundane hearings being held by a group or individual or department designated by the board with some set of parameters involved. And is that allowed, or is it just simply not allowed? And it's not clear to me. I've done some research, and I don't know whether this is a delegable type function or not.
You raise a good question, and we can certainly get clarification from town council. My take on this would be that we could have a consent agenda with items reflecting applications. There are, however, some types of license that require a public hearing, but I could conceive that we could have a public hearing with a consent agenda on it. We should get that clarified from town council. I don't see why we couldn't do that. We also have a board rule that we have, a policy that we adopted requiring that the personal presence of individuals, we can always change that. Mr. Matters, you had a comment. Those are my thoughts.
Okay, I don't want to go too far, because it's not exactly on our agenda, but I do want to make a comment, because I do agree with Stuart's observation, but I also need to, I feel, in, you know, a fair amount of years I've been serving with this committee, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's benign, you don't think of it, but we've had those one or two occasions that a neighbor has come forth, or a situation has come forth, that we have captured their concern during this process that I think has created a better resolution between the parties. So even though it is a little, you know, I'm going to say tedious, maybe sometimes, going through the same motions, or repetitive, or, you know, would have everyone to phrase it, I do think there are those few occasions that we've been able to make better amendments to the process by doing it with the Select Board, so just got to put a full picture out there.
Point well taken. I suggest that when we get some clarification from town council, we could have an agenda item. You haven't formally requested that yet, have you, as an agenda item?
I haven't. I brought it up at a few previous meetings, but nothing, you know, I didn't propose anything concrete. I just felt that we have, we just got rid of a number of agenda items, because, well, some of them are old.
Yeah.
And it gets kind of busy. So in order to get to the more substantive issues facing the town, not that we can't. the town, not that we can't do both, but this does take up time. And it just seems to me that if it's delegable, some of these handhold, construction, roadway things seem to be, certainly be able to be dealt with by the DPW, Rob Failey.
Well, let's get some guidance from Town Council. Let's put it on a future agenda to discuss this. With respect to Mr. Matters' point, I could conceive that if we had a consent agenda, that an item could be pulled from the agenda at that meeting, but you wouldn't necessarily know to pull it unless you had someone in the audience that was a neighbor that had some concerns. But we can discuss that more fully at a future meeting.
Great.
What's pending right now is a motion to continue, and I'm going to call the roll on this. Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So this will be continued till August 5. Next item on the agenda is Chatham Wells PFAS and Drinking Water Testing and Pumping Update, June 2025. Mr. Failey, DPW Director. Welcome, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob Failey, Public Works Director. Just want to go over the, briefly, the June pumping report for Chatham's wells, then drinking water testing report, and follow up with the drought update. So the following water reports for June, the wells have been pumping eight to 16 hours per day, and the water tanks did not hit low level alarm last month. We just found out that they hit the first time last Friday, which would be in the July report next month. But normally, we would have seen about three to five low level alarms by this time. So I think the water conservation measures, people are complying. So that's a good observation, anyway, in my opinion. Training Field Wells, 5 and 8 for the permanent treatment facility. Here's some pictures. Interior brickwork is complete. The roof work continues with the underlayment installation. The gable end framing and sheathing continues. Interior piping is ongoing. Just for the scale of this, you can see the broom at the bottom, the push broom, it looks like about like a toothpick. So those tanks are pretty enormous. That's a fully commercial two-story space that those are in, and those tanks fill it pretty well. But things are moving along. We're on schedule and currently on budget. So that's good news. Mill Pond Wells, 10 and 11. Ongoing communication with the Office of the Energy and Environmental Affairs. We finally got, everything is back in their hands. We're just waiting for the secretary to sign it, to give us the go-ahead to start pumping from well 10. It's in their court. There's nothing else we need to do at this point. For water sampling, all the bacteria samples are coming back clear. Nothing out of the ordinary here. This is all normal business. Well 4 was put back into service for the summer season, very early June. Had a little bit of a late start this year because we sent the water samples out. They came back with some bacteria. We had to flush the system a little bit more. So we got a little bit more of a late start than we typically would like to do. We like to do that right around mid-May to get that up and running, but it was slightly delayed. And as far as systems maintenance, we painted the hydrants on Main Street prior to the Fourth of July parade, just to spruce up downtown a little bit more. But again, system maintenance, everything is going according to plan. Nothing unusual to report there. So here's our pumping comparison, June 2025 compared to June 2024. You can see we're about 5.7 million gallons less than the previous year. You know, we're typically pumping, in June of '24, there were 21 days that were 2 million gallons. This year, there were only 15 days, 2 million gallons. So again, I believe people are complying with the water conservation restrictions, and we're seeing these results in our pumping capacity. And here is a, here's a chart that kind of interprets the same information. June 2025 is in the pink, and you can see pretty consistently that we are lower than last year, other than a few off days. Again, I think the water restrictions are really helping. And here's a bar chart with the same information. It's funny, observing that, it seemed like last year, it was Monday, Wednesday, and Friday are those big flow days, just because of the irrigation wells. It seems like our bigger flow days have shifted to, you know, possibly Thursdays. So I think maybe people are, when they're not irrigating on a Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, or Monday, they're concentrating that pumping. So just, I don't know, just my nerdy observations, so excuse that. Here's the monthly pumping report for the daily effort for each well. You can see well 4 came online on June 5. Wells 5 and 8 are still offline, and well 10 is offline. Our minimum pumping day is about 1.2 million gallons. Our maximum day was 2.8 million gallons, with an average of about 1.9 million. Total of 60 million gallons for the month. Here's a bar chart showing the level of effort for each well, or each group of wells. And please feel free to stop me at any point in time if you have any questions. This is our year-to-date pumping information. So looking at the entire year, the monthly total is 163 million gallons, which is about 10 million gallons less than last year. So we're doing pretty well. And here's the year-to-date bar chart comparison. Again, wells 1, 2, and 3 are very strong wells that provide water to Chatham. And since we are in a drought, I wanted to show the unmetored water usage. Unmetored use is down primarily because hydrant flushing has ceased for the summer prior to June. But there was still, we still need to do some flushing and blow-offs occasionally. We get complaints for brown water or for bacteria. We have to continue to flush. And if I'm going too fast, I'm pleased you have it in your packets. But so the five-year pumping comparison for the month of June, for the past five years, June 2025 is in the yellow columns. And you can see the hours, 347 pumping hours are pretty much in line with our average, pretty consistent with the last few years. The gallons pumped are slightly lower at 60 million gallons, where our average is 65 million. And this is the Chatham USGS Observation Well. I put an X at where we were at the time of this report, and translated that X to the same point in time for the previous five years. And you can see that in all but the first year, in 2021, we are kind of in a worse shape with water recharge in the aquifer. We're about similar to where we were in 2021. So, you know, it depends how severe this trough of this downward trend, the seasonal decline goes. But we'll talk more about that with the drought report. And this is the Brewster Observation Well. Again, it's more the bellwether for Lower Cape. Again, we are, in all five previous years, we are in worse shape water recharge-wise. And here we are to pump the drought status. So Cape Cod has been lifted from a Level 2 to a Level 1 drought. The primary driver behind this was the improvements of rainfall and recharge on the western half of the Cape. Eastern half, outer Cape, really is still relatively dry, but we're riding the coattails of the western half. So we met with the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, and we said, based on this information, we decided to recommend the water restrictions remain as they are. They are still more generous than what the state recommends at a Level 1, and it's still in compliance with, comparing to all of our neighboring communities, we're still at relatively, I know, most of those communities said they were going to keep those restrictions in place until September 30. So my recommendation would be to remain at the two-day watering per week, depending on your address, and keep all the restrictions the way they are today.
So Tuesdays and Thursdays, if you have an odd-numbered house, and was it Monday and?
Wednesdays and Fridays.
Wednesdays and Fridays for an even-numbered house. And you water before 9:00 in the morning and after 5:00 in the evening.
That's correct. I think it's serving us well right now. We're certainly not out of any danger. So I think it would be, you know, I would recommend remaining consistent with what we have in place.
Thank you. Very comprehensive report, as usual. Any comments or questions from members of the board? I'll entertain comments from the public, if anyone has anything. Nicole Stern, did you want to talk at this point? Did you have something relevant to Mr. Failey's report? I see that you're still on line.
No, not to his report.
Okay.
But
Well, we'll look forward to your comments on irrigation on August 5.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay. Seeing, anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, we will now proceed to a regular business agenda. We'll have public comments on the business agenda. Let me just tick off what they are. Very quickly, we have an alcohol license for a benefit party on Strong Island. We have an entertainment license one day for Line Circus. We have discussion and follow-up to an item that was voted at town reading, General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 3D, which deals with a taxation aid fund and committee. And we will accept public comments during that item as well. We have committee appointments. We don't customarily accept comments on those, and we'll have the Town Manager's Monthly Report. So are there any public comments on the business agenda at this time? Yes, Elaine Gibbs. I think that's you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is regarding the Town Manager's Monthly Report. And it's regarding the Chatham Municipal Academy. It's in the packet, but I'm not sure how many people know about it. It's a nine-session program designed to provide residents with a deeper understanding of how their town government operates. It's going to run for nine weeks on Wednesdays from 6:00 to 8:00. It's only open to a limited group of 12 people, giving them a unique opportunity for community members to engage with municipal staff, explore town departments, and gain insight into the work being done around Chatham. Each session focuses on a different department, highlighting responsibilities, staffing, and current projects or initiatives, and that they are held in person at various municipal locations, buildings. And it says, "We hope the program will inspire greater civic engagement, foster stronger connections between the town and community." It's open to individuals who are interested in learning more about local government, becoming better informed on town matters. I guess I don't really understand the purpose of this. It's 12 people. This is something that all 6,000 of us would like to be able to see. It's not going to be videotaped because it's in the various municipal buildings. And, you know, I understand where, it seems to me it's more of a public relations thing. I think that this should be held in the room you're in now, and it should be videotaped so that people can watch it. I assume there's not going to be any conflict once a week from 6:00 to 8:00. It goes from September 3rd to October 29th, so that we can all view it. I mean, I think we all are trying to engage, but to limit this, I just don't understand it. And I would ask if any outreach is being done to make sure certain members actually become one of those 12, because I think that would be definitely inappropriate, that it should be definitely a first come, first served, let the chips fall where they may. But otherwise, I would ask that it be held in this room and videotaped so that it can be watched at our convenience at some point moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, when we get to the Town Manager's Monthly Report, I'll ask the Town Manager if he has any comments in response to your questions. Thank you. Any other comments on the, public comments on the business agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll start with the first item, which is to consider a special one-day alcohol license for a benefit party on August 8, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Strong Island, Chatham. The Chatham Conservation Foundation and Lauren Acramano is, she, there you are, I'm sorry. Lauren, from the Conservation Foundation, could you please present to this? Welcome.
Good evening. The Chatham Conservation Foundation will be holding a benefit fundraiser on Strong Island on August the 8, and we would like to approve for a one-day liquor license.
So the application has been submitted. I just had a question for you, Kathy. Because they're a nonprofit, maybe this is not required, but under the name of the line item for the name of the wholesaler of alcohol, it just says donated. Do we need to have an ID of the company, a firm that's providing the donor?
I can clarify that, but it doesn't necessarily need to be. They're registered, which allows them to accept donations from any party donating. But if you would like that, I'm sure I can get that information from the Acramano.
Any comments or questions from the board? Do I have a motion to approve this?
Move to approve the one-day alcohol license?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Moved and seconded. I'll call the roll. Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Approved. Thank you. Next is to consider a special one-day entertainment license for Line Circus, July 28 to August 8, 2025, at 564 Main Street, Chatham. And Mr. Reed Williams and others, I guess, please tell us what this is about, and we might have some questions. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board, and Kathy, and the people of Chatham. We are Line Circus, which is a weird marriage between the Cape Cod Shakespeare Festival in Chatham, which we're performing in Cape Gold Park, and I need to be onstage in about 30 minutes. And then with Circus Smurkis, who we have two alums here, who they just wrapped up their tour on the Cape. And so the three of us have elected to create an act and create our own show that we will be workshopping in front of the library. And after speaking with Amy, who's the director of the library, we have gotten their programming schedule, and we will be, with blessings, performing there throughout the week, depending on their schedule and their daily schedule. Our show runs about 25 minutes, and we will be doing juggling, partner acrobatics, if we can make unicycle work, which I don't think we can because it's grass, but that's all of our possibilities. Oh, and still walking.
Any questions from the board and comments from the board? I know this is at the library, and we own the building, and I'm sympathetic to this. Are there any liability issues that the library has addressed? I know the director has okayed this.
I can look into that.
I mean, they do, from what I've seen in the past, some of this is done at the Shakespeare Festival.
It is. And so this is now a departure from that, branching off and becoming our own thing.
Yeah, okay. We'll just check with her, but I don't think that should hold this up. Okay, is there a motion?
Sure. I move to grant a special one-day entertainment license to Reed Williams of Line Circus for two shows daily at 11:30 AM and 1:00 PM between July 28 through August 8, 2025, at 564 Main Street in Chatham.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Call the roll. Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. 3 to 0. You have it. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Now, the next item is discussion on the follow-up to the 2025 Annual Town Meeting, Article 55, Consider Implementation of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 3D, Town Aid to Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund and Committee, Voluntary Checoff Donations. We will accept public comments. I guess we'll turn to our Town Treasurer first for some background. There's some material in the packet, which I hope the public has seen. Sharon, welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. Sharon Drown, Treasure Collector. So at Annual Town Meeting, held on May 10, 2025, Chatham voters approved Article 55, adopting Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60, 3D, Section 3D, which enables the town to establish a taxation aid fund. This fund allows residents to voluntary contribute towards real estate tax relief for qualifying low-income elderly and disabled residents of Chatham. To formally implement this statute, the board is being asked to take several key steps. The first step is to establish a five-member taxation aid committee and seek volunteers to serve. This committee consists of the Chair of the Board of Assessors, the Town Treasurer, and three residents of the Town of This committee consists of the Chair of the Board of Assessors, the Town Treasurer, and three residents of the Town of Chatham. The second step is to delegate the review and revision of requisite applications, rules and regulations governing the administration of this matter. It is the role of the taxation aid committee to adopt the rules and regulations and carry out the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60, Section 3D. Sample application rules and regulations were provided in the agenda packet. The board may want to have the committee review the sample draft materials provided. The third step is to determine the appropriate method for offering the option. It is respectfully requested that the option for tax aid donation be presented on the tax bill rather than a separate insert, as it's more cost efficient. The cost is underlined under the fiscal impact, but is estimated at $300. This also does not prevent donations from being made at any time outside of the tax bill. I am working with City Hall Systems on providing a online option for contributions as well. With regards to a timeline for implementation, the Town of Chatham issues real estate tax bills semi-annually in October and April. The goal is to have the donation option available, starting with the October 25 fiscal year 26 first installment bill. The fourth step is to direct the treasurer collector to establish a duly designated trust fund for the proper management and safeguarding of the collected funds in compliance with the town's investment policy. Principal and interest earned shall be used for the purpose of taxation aid to any applicants approved by the committee to receive these funds. The treasurer collector recommends that the funds be managed by Bartholomew and Company. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. A very extensive and, I think, comprehensive summary of the issue before us, which initiated a town meeting on a petition that was presented by Mr. Taylor. And I know he's here and I will call on him momentarily, but I wanted to, I do have a couple of questions and comments myself, but I want to ask my fellow board members, do you have any questions or comments at the moment?
No, I mean, I think it's, I think we, you know, glad we're getting this going. I do think, I mean, I don't know how deep want to get into the weeds on any of this, but like, I know on the five-member committee, you know, we've identified two specific members. We have three at large. I would be of the opinion to kind of set a kind of a shorter window, kind of encourage people to step forward and try to get this committee full sooner than later. So this is my initial thought.
I'm hoping we'll take some votes tonight to approve this whole thing and approve the creation of a committee and invite the public to serve. Stuart, did you have anything you wanted to say at the moment?
Not at the moment. Thank you.
Okay. Let me just throw out a couple of things, and then we'll go to the public. Sharon. So the rules and regulations, what, as I'm reading the memo, this, those are really suggested to the select board for referral to the committee. It's the committee that ultimately adopts them.
That is correct.
This is sort of a suggested set of.
That is correct.
Rules. And the whole process here is sort of a public version of a GoFundMe program, only it's ongoing. And you can check off on your tax bill, or there could be a separate insert, or someone could just make an outright donation to the to the town. In the material, the sample application, and this is repeated, I think, elsewhere. There's a question, have you been granted a tax deferral if, yes, you are not eligible for assistance with this program? I'm not sure what that means. Does that disqualify someone who is on a program to?
Yes, so most of the applications that we pulled, that was a, that was one of, one of the rules. If you are deferring your taxes, you are, you are not able to participate in this type of tax relief, because you're already getting tax relief by deferring your taxes.
Is that something you got from other communities? Is that? Well, that's something, are we obligated to have that disqualifier on there?
I I would think we couldn't discuss that. I would have to look deeper into that. As I said, the majority of the applications that we pulled, it was on each one.
Does the DOR have a position on that? Do we know yet?
That's a good question. I can pose that question.
Okay, well, we'll discuss that, but I did notice that. And the program is such that someone would have to reapply each year?
Yes, this is an annual application.
Every year. The only other comment I had was, I think, it related to the eligibility on the application. If you are, if your property is held in trust, I think it said you have to have a, I think maybe it was on a subsequent packet of materials. It says, if title is held in trust, the applicant must be both a, again, these are just suggested guidelines. Must be both a trustee and at least a 50% beneficiary of the trust in order to qualify. My comment is, and I've made this comment relative to the residential tax exemption. Trusts are, real estate trusts are all set up differently, and sometimes the word beneficiary doesn't even appear in the trust, even though it's clear that the individual who's living in the house is the beneficiary. So that's something that should be considered. Under the definition of disabled, it does require that the person not be able to work. I don't know if that should be a criterion or not. And I was a little confused as to the language about if the real estate is owned by more than one person, total household income will be considered. I'm not sure what the import of that is, but I would leave that for future resolution. Again, the issue of deferral is mentioned in the application process language. So that's, those are my comments on it. I'm gonna, I know we have someone on line two, but Mr. Taylor, I know that this was your creation, as it were, and I would invite you to address any comments you have on this to help us formulate a good program.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yeah, this isn't mine. This is just me doing the work to see what the Commonwealth allowed us to do. And the more time I've spent in Chapter 59, I'm a little embarrassed on what we haven't done that has been statutorily available to us, but we're on the right road now. And I'm looking forward to you folks getting this started, which is really not more than, in my reading of the statute and how this gets created, authorizing the treasurer to open the account, which I believe you must do. And I think the treasurer said that in her statements, and that you move expeditiously to appoint the at-large members of the committee so that it can get established. And I've spent a lot of time looking at the statute, and in answer to your question about whether or not someone that's on a tax deferral can or cannot receive monies from such an account as this, there's no statutory prohibition to that. That's been written into this by wherever this material came from, which is, it's nice of the treasurer to have pulled together some of the language that has been used by other communities that are doing this. But at the end of the day, it's the committee's responsibility to take this sort of information and amongst themselves, come up with something that's workable within the Town of Chatham, within the constraints of what we happen to have for needs in our community. And I think every community is going to be different in that regard, and I look forward to a committee being formed. I have applied to be on the committee, and I hope I'm favorably considered. I think this is a great first start for us to start to address some things that have been sort of not seen by us. I really wonder how many senior citizens that are historic families and long-term residents of the town we have lost to predatory practices when they fell silently into the tax arrears, because they were no longer able to earn a living when they were receiving the mediocre crumbs off the Social Security table. And the value of our Chatham property kept going up and up and up and up, to the point where they were sitting at a million dollars and they couldn't afford to pay the taxes. I know personally of multiple issues where people who were in that circumstance were convinced that they were, every day they waited. They were losing equity and the opportunity to cash out when the money was still there instead of belonging to the town. I know of several instances where that happened, and where people that had money were able to drop in and say, you know, let me pay you for this before you don't have any money left in your pocket. And this is a great way for us to start to hold our community and the members of our community a little closer to us. And I really appreciate the fact that you're taking the time and the effort, and my thanks to the treasurer for putting together such a comprehensive package. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer. You know, I put together something for you for a future agenda item. I've given Kathy enough copies for every member of the board to see the the three things that I think we can do in addition to this for us to keep going in this direction. I appreciate your time, and I would answer any questions before I sit down.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Corey?
Not really questions. Seth, I would thank you for, you know, putting, you know, kicking this ball rolling, passing it off to us. And and again, I mean, we got three at large. I appreciate you putting your name forward as one of those potential candidates. And I hope we can fill this, you know, the three open seats as quickly as possible, because we have a wealth of citizens out there who are very engaged and have a great background. So the talent is out there. We just need a couple more people to step forward, so.
It's my intention, whether or not I'm selected for this committee, that's that's for you folks to decide during your interviewing process. But it's my intention to seek out one of the towns that currently has one of these committees and see if I can go in and sit in on one of their meetings and and talk to them, either prior to or after they've closed off their committee, to get a bit of sense of how they've been making it work. I mean, documents aside, it's interesting and important, I think, to get firsthand discussions from people that have been using this for some time. I believe Wealthlead is there in Truro. I don't know if anybody close to upkeep.
Eastham.
Eastham has to. Okay, so we got Eastham, Wealthlead and Truro. I'm gonna see what their schedules are for their committees and see if I can sit in on one of those. Anyway, thank you very much. And again, great deal of thanks to the treasurer. That's a lot of work. I know it is, and it's gonna be a lot of work, not like you don't already have plenty to do. So thank you very much.
Seth, whether you like it or not, I'm gonna thank you for bringing this forward to town me.
Dean, let me tell you what. There's a lot of stuff that I've done that can fall on either side of the fence, but I'll tell you right now, I think that this is something that anybody in town should look at and say, you know, we should, we should get this done, that I happen to fall over it because of my relationship and observations of one of our really most vulnerable citizens. It just happened that I was the guy that saw that and asked the question, why is this happening? So nothing for me.
No, thank you.
Happened to find the penny.
Very good. Thanks. As far as the issue of the disqualifier, there may be nothing in the statute. I don't think there is. I agree with you. And I haven't looked at that section in a while, but we don't know if the DOR, for example, has provided some direction or guidance. That should be checked when the committee reviews these draft guidelines. Elaine Gibbs, is that you? And do you have some comment on this one? Are you muted? Elaine, I think you're muted. We're not hearing you. I wonder if her hand is up from before.
I think so. It's been up for a bit.
Okay. Why was that enlarged? Was that just us doing it?
No, that's because we focus on the speaker, so she was spotlighted.
All right. I think that was from before. So just to bring it back from the board, there's no one else, and Carrie, you don't have anything on this, do you? So, and town manager?
No, just a couple of actions for you to take tonight.
So stop me if, interrupt me if, please, if I'm missing something. So I think the first, we have the approval from the Revenue Commissioner. That's implicitly been given. The town treasurer obtained that information. I'll come back to the, well, the town meeting accepted the statute, so we don't have to take any action accepting it. We just have to approve whether we put it on the bill or whether we have a separate insert. The cost of each is pretty innocuous. You're recommending that we follow the version from the Town of Eastham, I think, or the Town Truro, which had, we have the sample bill.
Actually, sorry, Mr. Chair. Sharon, can you just confirm that, that it was?
So I was looking at the bill from the Town of Eastham initially.
Yeah, well, we have both.
Yes, so Eastham is is the sample that I provided our bill printer. And I think I liked it because it was very specific in saying it had to be a separate, a separate check for payment. And then I would also include the online option within that box.
Okay, well, let's take these, because I thought you were referring to Truro, which I kind of liked, but we'll talk about Eastham. So Eastham has, we don't have this on the screen, unfortunately, right? Why don't you put it up if you can, Kathy? Eastham.
Chairman, while we're waiting out a question.
Yes.
If you don't, if you don't mind.
To the town treasurer?
Sure, Sharon's. Sharon's always a friendly face, so I'll ask, do you have any, how long has this statute existed? Do you know?
I don't know how long it's been. I'm gonna say it's been around for a while.
Been around for a while. And something that the chairman asked, maybe I didn't follow it, but, so we established the committee and appointed by the board. Said board shall adopt the rules and regulations to carry out the provisions of this section and identify the recipients. So they refer to the committee, obviously, as the committee and the board. Is that the Board of Assessors or the Board of Select?
No, that's Select Board.
It's the Select Board. Okay, all right. I just wanted to.
So it is the board, the Select Board?
I think you mentioned committee. I just wanted to.
Yeah, I thought it was the other way around. Okay.
It's a little bit oddly worded, so I just wanted to follow up on that.
I would suggest that the process should be for the committee to take these guidelines, refine them, come back to us with their recommendation. Okay. Well, I'll just describe what, Kathy, you can continue to try to put that online. The version from the Town of Eastham has your regular tax bill, and then it has a box that reads, if you would like to donate to the taxation aid fund and aid to the elderly and disabled, please send a separate check for any donation amount over $1. And they give the Town of Eastham has the payee and the address. Please indicate taxation aid in the memo line of your check. So the individual has to write a separate check and mail it in versus the Town of Truro, which you also included, which has a box that says, Elderly Senior Disabled Fund Accepted, Massachusetts General Laws 63D, which allows the town to establish a fund to defray the real estate taxes of low-income elderly and disabled persons that allows taxpayers to contribute to the fund through voluntary checkoff on their bill. And then to the right is the actual tax bill, the amount due. And then it says voluntary contributions to local funds indicate the amount. The only fund they show is the Elderly Senior Disabled Fund, and you can write in, you know, $50 or whatever, and then there's a total payment. It seems to me that that's a lot simpler.
Yes.
And is more likely to encourage. And is more likely to encourage people to donate rather than my having to write a check and mailing that in.
From a processing perspective, our current accounting system will not make allowances for a separate receivable. So, when we are processing, we would have to literally side note a donation and turn it, it comes over to me as the treasurer in a separate form. So, when someone is running through processing a tax payment, that additional donation can't be processed at the same time because our system does not provide for that. So, I would agree with you, it is, it is an easier way.
I think people are more likely to donate on the simpler version.
Yes, I agree with you.
Having to write a check and.
Yes.
Put a stamp on it.
Right.
Is this a system that the town, I'm sorry?
I was just gonna, well, I was gonna say, the VEDAR is the VEDAR system?
Yes.
And we're looking to move away from VEDAR, but it's, it's still a couple of years away.
Go ahead, Stuart, I'm sorry.
Okay, I interrupted, sorry. Okay, well, so it's the VEDAR system and there's, are those, this, this has come up in different cases unrelated to here where.
Irrigation.
Yeah, irrigation, our software doesn't work, it does, you know, goes on as to, we seem, we seem to be having trouble having compatibility to do maybe more creative things. So, the next sys, well, I guess this is to Jill, the next system, are those systems assigned by the state or do we decide what those systems are?
We would decide, so we could do like a request for proposal and then we could examine various municipal finance software systems and there's a few out there.
It's interesting, and I'm not a treasurer or accountant, but I haven't heard anybody that likes VEDAR, I don't know if I'm the only one, but it seems to be pretty unpopular, but common.
In preparation for this, I did speak with them regarding modifying the system, no different than we did with OPEB when we had the OPEB deduction, but they, I was told that it would not be an option, so.
And one other, and, and if it's here, I apologize, but the Eastham and Truro and, I don't know, Wellfleet was the other community? Yeah, yeah. Do we know what the total revenue collected on these donations?
Yes, I actually have that information.
You probably gave it to me and I probably don't even remember.
I was gonna ask that as well, thank you for asking that. Curious to see how much they're taking in, because they each have a different checkoff system.
It was, it was a little difficult to get some of the information because not all the towns that have their committee, the minutes aren't up to date or aren't posted at all. I did pull, I think this is Plymouth, as of May 6th, they had their fund at nineteen, almost $20,000 and it looks like they keep a 25% reserve amount, which is a, that's a wise thing to do. Let's see, Truro. Truro's last posted minutes, they had noted a fund balance of $10,157 and that was in 2024, that was May 7th. Wellfleet, as of August of '23, had a balance of $22,525.90, but they also had a CD balance, which I was kind of curious about why they had a separate account and that is noted as having $37,000.
And, tell me if I'm getting too far down the road, but.
Can I just ask, do we have something for Eastham? Do you have a number?
I don't have Eastham, those were the only ones I was able to obtain.
Okay, go ahead, Stuart.
Is there opportunity for, in the future, if the town chose through town meeting to donate or match these funds in some sort of, to, to, to create some incentive part of the taxpayer to donate?
I would think I would have to get some kind of legal counsel on that.
Yeah, okay, well, thanks.
I don't know the answer to that question either.
Well, thanks for putting this all together and thanks Seth for bringing this forward again.
Well, I think so, the first question we're gonna have to take a vote on hopefully tonight is, and I know we don't have the full board, but I don't really wanna wait, is, you know, what kind of checkoff do we want? And we're having a problem with the VEDAR complication and they, and, and they're, they're saying they can't make that modification even if we, and I don't know whether you could do this under the procurement laws, even if there were some additional compensation paid to them, is that possible, an amendment to their contract or, I don't know what it would cost?
I don't, I don't know, Sharon, if you've asked that question.
I, I would have to have a deeper discussion with them, but from my perspective, if, if the board prefers the other format, that is fine. Internally, I will just have to come up with a process so that a donation doesn't get missed. Because then you've got human error and entry.
Every bill would have to be opened up and someone in your staff would have to check off.
Yes.
Make a list of.
Yes, I'd have to come up with a process so that nothing gets overlooked, which I can do.
Okay. Any, go ahead, Stuart.
Yeah, did, did I see an opinion maybe, Sharon, that you provided from some law firm? Was that a different, it was on a taxation issue, it was a letter. Anyway, so you, you've got some legal counsel on this, is?
Not on the, are you thinking, you're thinking the tax title?
Yeah, the tax title.
The payment plan letters that were circulated perhaps?
I know what you were thinking about, that was unrelated.
Yeah, okay, all right.
That's outside of this.
And, and I did have a question on that, but that will come up at a different time then.
Okay. Corey, did you have any thoughts on this? Well, what do we wanna do about the check off? I, I, I think the number one priority should be to get this going. And, you know, I, as much as I would prefer to have the Truro version, I can understand the complications for implementing it that way and I'm willing to go along with the Eastham version with the thought that if we ever wanted to change it, we could change it. Does anyone wanna offer a motion or have further discussion on this point?
I'm fine with moving forward with the Eastham version with the acknowledgement that we are looking to amend it to a more productive or efficient system when that opportunity arises. I mean, let's get the ball rolling.
Okay, you wanna offer a motion?
So moved.
Eastham.
Eastham version.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? All right, I'll call the roll, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
This, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, so that's, question one has been resolved, Eastham. Establish the taxation committee, well, we have to take a vote to establish that and it's, the, the composition is set forth in the statute, chair of the Board of Assessors, the town treasurer, two, and three residents of the town appointed by the Select Board. So, I'll entertain a motion to establish the taxation aid committee, is that the formal name of it? Mr. Metters, do you move this?
I move it.
Mr. Smith, do you second it?
I'll second it and I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, before we take the vote, it's moved and seconded.
The, the committee, and this is really out of curiosity, I'm trying to get my head around some other issues that are related to it, but the committee is established by statute, they clearly lay it out. Is, is there in a, if the, if the Board of Select Board wanted to increase that number to, I don't know, say seven, are we able to do that under the authority in the charter or is this?
I don't think you can because it's like the Parks and Rec Commission, it's the, it's, it's, you have a statute of general applicability that specifically says, these are the, this is the composition of the committee, the chairman of the Board of Assessors, the town treasurer and three residents of the town. We could get some clarification on that from town council as to whether the charter, you know, gives this town the, the option to differ on that part, but this is, this is a statute that has to be accepted, we've accepted it as it is.
I, I.
So it's got its stands of, of legal import with the charter.
Right, and I, I'd be interested in legal counsel's opinion on this because it does affect other questions I had and I think it's relevant, not that I'm interested in increasing the size of the committee, I'm just curious if there was a, if the, if the, this board or a future board chose to change that, would we have that ability? Now, this statute deals with taxation and my, you know, cursory understanding is that the charter can't affect elections, law and taxation, so, but I'm, I'm interested in his response.
Yeah, I, I think, we, we can get that in, sir, but I, and I'll ask, I know Mr. Taylor wants to say something, but I'll just say that my, my view of it is, and I'm speaking as someone with some background in this area of municipal law, that, that because the, the state legislature has provided this, a local option law, we've accepted it, we're bound by what's specified in the statute, but we can check that. Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think you're missing one of the salient points here. This committee is a committee that was formed by town meeting, not by the Board of Selectmen, which means in, in terms of the charter, if you, if the committee were gonna be expanded beyond the statutory provisions, which is what was passed at town meeting, you'd have to go back to the town meeting to do that because this committee is the town meeting's committee.
Yeah, I, I, and I agree, I agree with that interpretation, mine was a broader.
I, I think that's pretty clear.
Did, did, I mean, I don't wanna, you know, get down into the weeds, but I, I think the Select Board has to formally create the committee in order to implement the vote of town meeting.
Reading the statute, I, I disagree, the, the committee was formed as soon as the vote was taken, what your responsibility is, is to appoint the at-large members. Statutorily, the two members that are spoken of as the treasurer, collector and the chairman of the Board of Assessors are set and it speaks to your appointing the at-large members. So, I, I think that that's where you are, I don't think you have to create the committee, this town meeting did that.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna differ with you because, and I will just say, I think we should take the vote anyway.
It doesn't hurt.
But the, the reason I differ is that the, the statute in the first paragraph says, actually, this was your article, to see if the town will accept the provisions of the general laws and in accordance will establish a fund. So, the, the article asked town meeting to create the fund and they supported that, but I, you know, I don't wanna get down, bogged down in differences of opinion, I think it's important that we get this established and we should, whether it's the belt and suspenders, we should just appoint, we should create the committee and, and call for its appointment, so. Corey?
Just for clarification, so we're, the establishment of the committee, are we establishing terms of each membership or anything like that? Two-year term, three-year term, staggering them, are they all?
I, I think we have the right to do that under this charter. Because the statute is silent on that. Do we have the actual statute in front of us? Yes.
I, I would suggest it be three years, but that's just my.
I mean, I'm fine with that, I'm, I'm just saying we do, we.
Good question.
You know, are we, is all five members a three-year term? Are we staggered or, I don't know, I mean.
No, it's a good point.
Just, in any city or town establishing the fund, there shall be a taxation aid committee to consist of the chairman of the board, the city or town treasurer and three residents to be appointed by the mayor of the Board of Selectmen and the board adopts rules and regulations. So, just to simplify things, I, I agree, I think we should establish terms, there are three people, we should give one person a three-year term, one person a two-year term and one person a one-year term. That would make sense, I think, that's why it's staggered and, for starters, and, and they each have a three-year term on renewal or reappointment. Does that make sense?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so I'll entertain a, a motion to establish the taxation aid committee to consist of the town treasurer, the chairman of the Board of Assessors and three residents of the town to be appointed by the Select Board for three-year terms to be staggered. That's the motion, I would like one of you to, I'll offer it if I have to, or you can amend it however you'd like before you offer it.
Just, I'm, I'm fumbling right here, but if we're stacking them, they're all established at the same year, so.
It's just that the first, the first, this is similar to the Affordable Housing Trust language, the first, we'll have three people on board right away, but one of them will be serving a one-year term, one of them will be serving a two-year term and one will be serving a three-year term initially.
Initially.
And then after that, all terms are three years.
If they, if they seek to be reappointed, it'd be a four, three-year span.
Yeah, whoever is appointed.
Just wanna be clear.
That's, so that's the, that was the proposed motion, all right.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, you did have a motion and a second already, just not with the staggered terms part, just reminding you.
Who offered that?
Mr. Metters offered the motion, Mr. Smith seconded it.
I will amend to incorporate the language of the staggered terms.
And you will accept that second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, we'll call the roll, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, we've done that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is there any way we can kind of set a timetable to, to try and get the applicants that forth?
Yes, I think we should and I think we've got one applicant, we don't have more than one at the present time. We should post this and we can put it in the main sheet this week and we can try to solicit individually anybody that might be interested, I mean, we've interest, we've interviewed some interesting people the last couple of rounds, maybe some, someone there might be interested, but yeah, what timeframe would you like? Because we next meet on August 5th, we're not gonna appoint people that.
No.
No.
12, 22nd.
We'll schedule interviews as soon as we can.
We can keep, well, we can take, take interviews, do you wanna, wow, 30 days?
Well, we're meeting every two weeks, but 30 days is fine.
Every two weeks, so, I'll say 30 days.
You want a date by which people have to apply, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And we could, we could add a meeting.
Yes.
If you really wanna get this.
Yeah, we can.
I think it's important.
Yeah, we can do that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, just for discussion purposes, the August 5th interview session has one open interview slot left, the August 19th has one open interview slot left, so just putting that in your timeline, like the 5th and the 19th are almost full in terms of.
We only have one applicant, maybe that applicant can meet with us on the 5th or the 19th.
I already have that email tracked, yeah. So, that might actually push it out, just.
Okay, all right, so, we don't have to take a vote, we've got 30 days, so we'll, they have to apply by August 22nd or whatever, 30 days, yes. Yeah, with the, with, our next meeting, it's the 5th and the 19th, so. So, the 22nd is a Friday, so, okay, so we'll put, we'll, we'll insert in the, in the notices that they have to apply by August 22nd and we'll post this tomorrow if possible, okay.
Mr. Chair, do you, I'm sorry, just to, because there's a break in meetings, do you want it to have it by the 15th? I'm just looking here. We're meeting on the, on the 5th and the 19th in August, so would you want it then by August 15th? So you can get it on.
No, I think we want it 30 days for people to apply and then what's the next meeting after August 15th, August?
September 2nd.
September 2nd.
If you're okay with that.
If we get applicants, we can interview them between, between now and September 2nd and vote them in on September 2nd, possible. Corey?
I mean, the board's fine with that, I would even be willing to roll it back even shorter.
What's your suggestion?
Okay, with their, with their schedules of what, the 5th and the 22nd?
5th and the 19th.
5th and the 19th, sorry. Strung a number in my hair. Trying to think of the logistics here, I just, we're looking at three openings, we have one candidate so far, I would hope, with the importance of this, of this position, that we would get some responses quickly, you know, I don't want to have it linger too long and.
Well, in terms of actually when we could make an appointment.
Right.
It would be no sooner than.
The 5th.
We can make a staggered appointment for the one candidate that's applied, if we decide to appoint that individual, earlier, but the next two board meetings are the 5th and the 19th. I mean, as Stuart said, we could have a morning meeting some day and appoint people if we have them in earlier. So, if you want to truncate that down to 25 days, I think 20 days probably is too short to get, it's the summertime, get people interested. Hopefully, the Chronicle will write this up in their next week's edition.
I mean, you want to say by August 15th deadline for applicants?
Yeah.
Okay, August 15th. All right, and we don't have to take any other votes tonight, right? The rules and regulations, I misspoke earlier, it was pointed out, the statute says it's the select board that adopts them, but we would certainly want the committee to take a look at the guidelines that have been put together, and then they can report back to us their recommendation as to what they think we should adopt.
Right, and I would like to have the committee meet to really dig into some of the questions.
Yes, yes, I mean, that's going to be for the committee.
If we need legal counsel, that's the perfect time.
Yes, I think that's understood, yeah, and how are you going to conduct your meetings? Because you'd want executive sessions like the assessors do, and Mr. Burke, who's the chair, is very familiar with that process, so, but I don't think we have anything else to vote on tonight, do we?
I just want to make sure, so you don't need them to establish the fund?
So, I just need them to direct.
Direct you, just, okay. Sharon, can you turn your mic on?
Sorry. I don't think it requires a motion, you just.
You need a direction to establish the fund?
Yes.
I move, go ahead.
I'll move that we instruct the treasurer to establish the fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, three to zero. Okay.
Thank you.
You need direction on where you had recommended the fund be administered by Bartholomew, you need direction on that?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
They handle all our investments.
Yes.
Okay, I think we are done with this particular item, okay? Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thank you, thank you, Sharon, very, very, very comprehensive work, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, now we have some appointments and reappointments, and first one is, let me just get my paperwork in front of me here, the appointment of a constable, reappointment of a constable, the town clerk, Julie Smith, she's online, Julie, hi Julie.
Hello there, I'm here with my annual request for constable reappointments, and John Proudfoot is up for reappointment this year, so I'm just requesting that you reappoint him until June 30th, 2028.
Do we have more than one constable?
We have three, yes, and they have rotating appointments.
Who are the other two?
The other two are Paul Tavalone and Ben Nickerson.
Okay, all right, is there a motion to reappoint John Proudfoot?
I'll make a motion that we appoint John Proudfoot to the position of constable.
Second?
A second.
Until June 30th, 2028?
Yes.
Okay, moved and seconded, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now we have the annual appointment of commission representative, I'm sorry.
Election officials.
Julie Smith.
Yes, my second request is that we, that you reappoint our election officials, we go through a process where we contact the Republican in town, town committee, chair people, and request a list of interested individuals to work at our elections. We did get a list from our Republican representatives, and we did not get a list from our Democrats, but what I have done is, I listed the Republicans that were sent in to me, and then the Democrats that we have historically used, and who have been very helpful at elections and town meetings, and then we also have unenrolled voters that we have appointed election officials in the past, and I'm just asking that you appoint them as well.
Thank you, Julie, I recall this multiple times, but I had one question, one name jumped out at me under the listening of the Democrats, Anita Dusset, is that the town clerk in Harwich?
Retired town clerk, yes.
Is she a Chatham voter?
She does, she is not, she is a Harwich voter, and under mass law, as long as you're a voter in Massachusetts, you are eligible to be an election worker in any town in Massachusetts, as long as you're doing the thing.
I wasn't aware of that. Okay, well, thank you very much. So, is there a motion to appoint these election officials? There's one recited in the.
I move to appoint the individuals listed above as election officials until June 30, 2026.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, call the roll. Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Julie, you're all set.
Thank you.
Next is the Parks and Recreation Commission representative to the Preservation Commission, and we have a, Mr. Mallos has been their representative, they have recommended the Parks and Recreation Commission voted four to zero to recommend Mr. Mallos for reappointment as their representative to the commission, to the Community Preservation Committee. Is there a motion that someone wants to offer?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we.
So, get a second page.
To reappoint, hold on, hang on. I move to reappoint David Mallos as the Park and Rec Commission to the Community Preservation Committee until June 30, 2028, until, unless sooner revoked, or a successor is appointed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, call the roll. Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so he is reappointed. Economic Development Advisory Committee, we had an individual who was interviewed last meeting, before the last meeting, for several committees, Richard Creath, and one of the committees he expressed an interest on was the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and so I suggested that, to Kathy, that we put this on the agenda for possible appointments, so, does anyone want to offer a motion on that particular position?
I move to appoint Richard Creath to the Economic Development Advisory Committee until June 30, 2027, unless sooner revoked, or a successor is appointed.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and that's, the reason it's 27 and not 28 is this is a shortened term, because it's filling a position that had been vacated.
That is correct.
Okay, we'll call the roll. Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, thank you. That committee has not met yet, right?
No, but they're in the process.
Are they now fully?
Yes.
Okay, so they'll have to organize an elected chair. And the last one is the Historical Commission, the commission has requested that Mr. Robert Wilson, who is currently an alternate, be elevated to the position of a full-time member, he was appointed as an alternate through June 30th, 2026. The reason there's a vacancy on the full membership is that Sandy Porter moved down to alternate recently, so I'll entertain a motion from one of my colleagues.
I move to appoint Robert Wilson as a full member of the Historical Commission through June 30, 2028, unless sooner revoked, or a successor is appointed.
I'll second that.
Okay, call the roll. Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, that includes the committee appointments and reappointments, and now we return to the Town Manager's monthly report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so in your packet, you have the monthly report of the departments, as well as any follow-up.
I'm sorry, I missed something in your notes to me, on the appointment of Mr. Mallos, did we say representative?
Mr. Smith did not, but I did put it in.
Okay, that's understood, he is the representative of, that's the term in the bylaw, I think.
Careful with those newbies.
Apologize, just get that clarified.
No, it was my error on the report, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, the first item that we have for either current items or follow-up items is that the establishment of a Chatham Municipal Academy, and this academy is based on the success that we've had with our Citizen Community Fire Academy, as well as our Police Academy. So, it's formatted pretty much the same, the number of sessions, as well as the location for Police and Fire have been at their facilities, with this one, we will have it at Community Center, 549 Town Offices, over at DPW, Natural Resources, and I might be forgetting, and at the Police and Fire Station. So, we're really excited about this first session, we'll see how it goes, and it is in-person, as was the Police and Fire Academies. So, I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Did you want to address specifically the questions and comments that Ms. Gibbs made, as I jotted them down? She was suggesting that this academy be held at the Annex, wanted, I think, to know what, well, I think you did discuss the purpose of it, whether there had been any outreach to specific individuals, because it's limited to 12, maybe you could address the limitation and whatever.
Yeah, so, we had it limited to 12, because that was pretty much if we were going to have it at various locations, if we did have to transport people, we could do that with, using the COA bus, but we actually examine numerous other municipal academies, including one that's now just launched in Brewster, and this was the format that we decided to go with, so to have locations at places where the departments would be presenting, and it's a two-hour session, we're going to allow for probably a 40-minute presentation, lots of questions and answers available, and then connection for content. We've already received numerous applications, they are first come, first served, it was publicized in the main sheet and social media, as well as the Town Manager's report.
So, just to follow up, thank you, the Police and Fire Academies, they repeat them every year, or every other year, as I recall, are they, are they limited in number?
Yes.
Per session, so I don't know what their number is, but I see pictures of the graduates each year.
Yeah, I have to check on it, it's no less than 12, and no more than 19, as far as I've seen.
Okay, all right, I don't have any further questions on that.
I just, maybe, maybe Ms. Gibbs asked, I don't, I don't remember. How were the 12 folks chosen?
They're, it's first come, first served, so they're submitting the applications directly to Shauna in our office, I believe, she's receiving them.
Okay, thank you. An application form online, is that what it is?
Yes, there's a link, or people can come to Town Offices and fill one out.
Okay.
And this is an effort that we had an intern, she's a Syracuse University student, also her family is a second homeowner here, and she worked to put everything together, do research, in addition with meeting with the departments, and running it through Leah Lacrosse, our Director of Community Services, and our Communications Manager, Shauna.
Okay.
So, we'll see, this is the first one, if we need to make any tweaks after this, we'd certainly be open to that.
Okay. Elaine, I do see your hand up, but I'm not going to entertain a comment at this time, because we did have it in the public comments section, I do really want to hold to the protocols that govern these meetings. I tried to address your questions to the Town Manager, I guess if you have any follow-up, you could email them to her or me.
We do that, but I don't, the question was answered about whether or not anybody's been asked to join the committee by the group.
I thought I asked that question in the sense that was there any outreach, which I think was the language you had.
We haven't done any specific outreach, we've advertised it to, in first come, first served applications.
Okay, I.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Jill, I'm sorry.
Sure, okay, so more, so thank you for that, and then, I've been here, as you know, we had our Team Chatham Employee BBQ last week, and also the Chatham A's hosted an employee appreciation night, and so we had a great barbecue, but we also were giving out our first recognition awards, and it was award that we called the Starfish, Making a Difference, One Act, One Event at a Time, and so, in here, I had noted who had received it, Chris Mazoulis, who's our, one of our newest members, he's our finance administrator, first year overseeing the sticker office, and we've received so many compliments on the work that he and his team have done. Hunter McDonald's our IT coordinator, he's done a tremendous amount of work with deploying new hardware and some of the software updates that never seem to go right, not on his part, but it just seems that the software itself always requires multiple actions, so he's done a really great job. And then Brian Powers, who you know, he's our DPW Highway Labor, he's retiring next month, and so we did a little something to honor him, he's the one that most people see downtown, and he's very particular and very proud of his work, and I think he's the one employee that we always get the most compliments, not only from his coworkers, but from the community, so wanted to thank them, and also Kaden Quinn, he's our Recreation Assistant, he's over at the Community Center, he threw out the first pitch, did a wonderful pitch, and so it was really great.
That was a great event, I know Mr. Metters and I were in attendance, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for that, and then we pulled out just some information about Lighthouse Beach Staffing, and if you have any questions, I might need to refer to Amy Howell, but there's currently nine Lighthouse Beach Staff, four monitors, and five Beach Patrol.
I did have a question about that when I saw that in the report, so, five of them are Beach Patrol, is that comparable or the same as what we had before? I don't mean in terms of numbers, but in terms of the activity?
Yes.
Okay, because initially, we thought we were just going to have monitors.
Right, and then they did an active recruitment, and so we were able to get in more patrol, and it's funded through the Lighthouse Beach Budget, and there's funding available.
Okay.
We had anticipated hiring only Beach Patrol when we did the funding for it, so there's funding available.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question on Chris Mazoulis, is this, and I just wasn't here for the last budget, is this a full-time position?
It is.
So, this is a, because, we haven't had a full-time sticker office person in quite some time, is that right?
Right, right.
So, this kind of brings that back?
Yes.
And who?
Isn't he full-time in the Finance Department, but he works at the sticker office also?
Yeah, so he'll, he works at the sticker office during the season, and then he'll come back to 549 and be the Finance Administrator, helping with the budget preparation, FinCom meeting preparation and follow-up as well.
Okay.
And, so the person that was doing this job before, what happened to that person?
So, we had a seasonal person, I think all my Finance people left, we had a seasonal person as a lead, we converted some of those funds, now I'm trying to think of, Kathy, do you remember how we got to the Finance Administrator total thing? I don't want to misspeak, so I'll be happy to get back to you, but he's been here for a few months, and it was a budget realignment that we did in 2025.
Okay, yeah, I wouldn't mind hearing about that if, because, you know, I've heard some unpleasant things about what happened with the previous person, so, Chris Mazoulis, where does he live? Not, like, he live in Chatham?
His family owns the Bow Roof, I'm sorry, I'm.
Yeah, some sort of.
Yeah, he's, he's a legacy Chathamite, it's off of Queen Anne Road, there's a, yeah.
And Hunter McDonald, where does this person reside?
Hunter McDonald is at 549, he was promoted, he was the so-called Recreation Assistant over at the Community Center.
I'm sorry, where's? I'm sorry, reside, where does he live? Do you know? Maybe you don't.
I, I don't know.
And Brian Powers is retiring. Has that person been, has that position been refilled yet, or is that kind of?
We're recruiting, and I think we're ready to make an appointment.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Jill?
All right, thank you.
Please continue.
90 Bridge Street, return of the U.S. Coast Guard Boathouse is one step closer, according to Greg Berman, who's also here in the audience. So we're working through that. Meeting House Road and 1531, 33 Housing Developments are moving through the formal permitting process for 1533, and they've just begun the preliminary process for the Meeting House Road property through the Planning Board. We also included an update here for the Eldridge Public Library improvements, and they're focused on reconciling site plan elements, including off-site and side rock repairs getting from the library, getting from Main Street over and up to Library Lane. So there has been activity, but it hasn't been the activity that's leading to what most people could see or witness on the site itself. But we're getting there.
I have one other question.
Sure.
Just my previous life, the boatyard, the boathouse. The building will need leveling. We knew that, but the. What does that mean, by the way?
Well, the inside of the building is structured as a ramp, because it's to haul the boats up.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so it's on a railway. But leveling, but the team that went on-site determined it is still viable as an upweller facility. Who, the team from, do we have an engineering group that looked at that?
I believe it was outlined in the Natural Resources Report. I just kind of copied a little snippet from the bigger report to put in the headline, but Greg wants to answer it.
I think that's correct. I saw that in the Nat Resource Report, too. But Greg is on part of that.
Greg Berman, you're Director of Natural Resources. Yes, our Project Manager, Rick Palmeroy, our Engineer from GEI, Dan Robbins, and Engineer from Tyon Bond, Structural Engineer, went up to look at the boathouse again, because it's been a couple of years. We wanted to see what was implemented from the previous recommendations and make sure it was still viable as a, you know, upweller facility. And we don't have the final report, but the draft report shows that it is still viable.
And when does, when is the projected date for this return? Is it going to be flighted or is it going to be put on a barge and brought back? Or do you not, maybe we don't know that yet?
We've had conversations with the donor and all the various stakeholders within our group, and it's very likely going to come back on a barge.
Yeah.
And then placed onto land, and then cut the floor out to make it a level structure, and then lift it up onto the sill that we'll be building.
Yeah.
It's up in Quincy still?
Yes.
This is a, and, you know, this is a complicated project, as you're finding. I, I kind of, you know, coming into this a little later in this position, it does raise some, I have some concerns about the oversight of this. And who is, who is ultimately responsible and who's leading the charge on this? So it kind of segues into, and then I'll, you know, then I'll maybe bring it up at another meeting, but it does segue into whether the town, hate to mention another committee, but the Building Committee for the school, I think, has been successful, and other towns have such committees. I think we've been severely deficient in, in the oversight of these projects. I know Mr. Palmeroy, you know, has been engaged to help with that, but I'm not sure that that is sufficient in all cases, as capable as he is. So anyway, I'm sort of talking out loud, but this is going to garner considerable comment and interest. And I suggest to the town that they prepare for that. Maybe outreach, you know, but I wouldn't go silently into the night on this project. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Greg. Jill?
Okay. Center for Active Living, you had received an update directly from me about a slight delay of moving from the Center for Active Living in its current state over to the Community Center. As of, that will probably take place closer to October, November. But the architect catalyst has expressed to us, he's very confident that the move-in date would still remain the same once the construction has completed. So the reasons for that, such is noted in there.
We're still talking about a projected move-in date of, I thought I saw late July, I thought I heard. It says late June 2026, but I thought I read elsewhere. It's July 2026. Am I wrong? Is it June?
It's, it could very well be, but right now, we haven't gone out to bid.
I think it is, Jill. Maybe I, maybe I'm remembering it incorrectly.
Yeah, so some work to get the bid out, including the design by the, and then also thank you to Sergeant Massey for his work as a School Resource Officer. It's now being transferred over to Charlie Chaparral's.
I just want to interject on that. I think I offered the motion to create that position about eight years ago, when Chief Paulina came before us. It was right after one of the horrible, it might have been the one in Florida, the Parkland.
Yes.
School shooting. And Sergeant Massey has done a great job there. He's very well-liked and a very professional person, so.
And as I usually do, I do Employee Years of Service Anniversary moving forward through the next month. We have Candace as for August at 19 years. I'm at 14 years. And we have firefighter Bill Field. And then we have a chunk of eight-to-nine-year longevity, Mike LoPriere, Rachel McGrath, and Sharon Drown, who you just saw tonight. And then Gloria McPherson, our Housing and Sustainability Director, has been here for three years. Andrea Warner, Accounting Assistant in the Finance Office, two years. Catherine Ricks, one year, and she has been recently promoted to the Coastal Resiliency Director. And then Ellie Ward, who's our part-time fire admin. And then we're really excited to welcome, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, you passed over very quickly, so almost no one heard it. But you were on this list for 14 years yourself, so congratulations for that.
Thank you. Excited to have Megan Green join us as our Town Accountant, and she'll be reporting to the Director of Finance, Carrie. And so she'll be here starting next week. Here's the introduction memo that I give to the Select Board, but we include it, and we also include it here. And then with Catherine Ricks' promotion, we had the vacancy in the Assistant Conservation Agent, and we've recently hired Bradford Bauer. He'll start on August 4, and there's some information in there about him and his background. And then any of the recruitments that are still open are on the website. They'll come down once the position has been filled. And a couple of things here about the positions, advertisement. Here, you would see how we do a social media post for it. Then I know the hour's getting late. I included some Town Manager speaking engagements. It's just really interesting, not only just networking, but helping the DOR try to recruit community college students to come into the provision for municipal finance. And then invited by the Boston University Center for Data Science to talk about some real-life applications of using AI and using it responsibly. So it was a really interesting conversation with other community stakeholders from around the state, as well as academic and students. And then Kathy indexes the project updates, so there's the page numbers. Here I also have the Chatham TV productions, our must-see TV, which are always easy to access on our YouTube channel. And then some of the data behind who, the numbers of hits or access to our social media accounts. And I always include the emergency notification, Smart 911, so that people remember to register for that. So the rest of the report are monthly reports from the various departments, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, my, my only comment, I think I made it, or maybe others have made it as well, prior to COVID, COVID, and when new hires were brought on board, we used to meet them here. Can we return to that practice? I mean, I don't, I know it's tough for, especially some of our employees who don't live in Chatham, to have to hang around after the close of business to be introduced for 30 seconds, but.
I think that's fine. It's important that they meet you, too. So we'll work with the newer employees to see if it's not, you know, the first week they're hired, we can certainly try to do it within the.
Okay, great. Any other comments on the Town Manager's Report? Stuart?
I just kind of cursory comments. I guess they're questions. And you've heard me chat about this. And I was just, I was going to ask Jill, like, when I look at this, I forget what, no page here, but we are hiring, you know, Joint Team Chatham, position, available positions include, and you kind of list these. Do, while you or before you fill these positions, are, are you evaluating, I mean, I assume that you're evaluating whether or not there are structural changes that you would propose making on some of the organizations of these various functions. You know, one that jumped out at me is the landing officer. And it seems to be the abandoned stepchild as far as a position. It has had very little supervision or guidance, almost no training. We're fortunate to have Dave, but, you know, he, like anyone, he won't be there forever. And it seems to me, well, with Ted's retirement, Christine Hicks?
Catherine, Catherine.
Oh, Catherine Hicks. She has an extensive and, you know, frankly, an impressive and I think appropriate background, but not for supervising this position or that function. Do you look at that and think, maybe you want to reevaluate that?
Notify the union of any changes. One of them that we recently changed was, or just slightly changed, was a Behaviorsal Health Community Service Clinician. Might have heard in the report that both the chief and Leah had done, is that we found that designating someone as a youth clinician, we weren't getting any applicants. But when it was broadened out to youth and adults, we seemed to get more applicants. So yes, certainly, we consult. I haven't heard any issues with our seasonal landing officers about being untrained, but Greg's here, so if there's any follow-up, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I mean, and certainly the clinician position is certainly appropriated, appropriately slotted in the, in the current Department of Community Services. I think that's, it's a good program. But this one jumped out at me, and you may have heard me, you know, I think we have issues at the Parks Function, Parks and Recreation Function of that currently called a division. I think it, it needs to be relooked at. And I'll be talking with Dean how to best bring that up and approach it, but it's something that I'd ask you to think about as to whether or not downgrading what I think is a really important function for beaches, parks, and it used to be cemeteries, could be included under a reestablished Parks Department. I think for our community, that's, I think would be huge benefits to that. And something to think about. And certainly, the Town Landing Function, whoever those people are, but the function of who's supervising that is, has always been very unusual and out of the norm of most communities as to where it's slotted now. And now with Ms. Hicks coming on board, with her background and experience, it's even more inappropriate, just because she doesn't have that. And her function has changed to resiliency appropriately. And that function really should be relooked at, so we can, it has some better supervision and guidance. That's, that's it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I have biweekly meetings with the Select Board members. Stuart, you and I, tomorrow's our day, so we can certainly talk further about it.
Okay. And I never know where to bring up my issues, whether.
I think that's a good forum.
This meeting.
I think that's a good forum for it. I mean, the ultimate determination of the charter is with the Town Manager, but she obviously wants to listen to what the Select Board has to say about it. I think she organizes the.
Yes, yeah.
You know, we've had executive, not recently, but we've had executive orders or.
Administrative orders.
Administrative orders, and we can object to them, I think.
Yeah.
But anyway, I, I think an informal conversation might be the best way to start.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So no more.
That's it, thank you very.
Thank you, Jill. Very comprehensive report. I do like the additional, the addition of the pictures in the document. I guess that's Kathy or, or Shawna, or both. Okay. Final item on the agenda, item seven, is to go into executive session. I'm going to read it, and I'm going to ask, I'll read the item first. That, this is the executive session, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21, Number 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, parentheses, 31, Meeting House Road, South Chatham, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body with no return to open session. So I'm going to propose the language of a motion and ask one of you to adopt, to offer that motion as.
I offer the motion as previously stated.
Okay, so it's, it's the motion to, you've moved, you move that we go into executive set. I'm going to repeat it, executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21, Paragraph 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, parentheses, 31, Meeting House Road, South Chatham, close parenthesis, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body with no return to open session. That's Mr. Matters' motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and I'll call the roll. Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we are going into executive session. We will not return to open session. Good night, Chatham.